All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. An email had gone out that we were apparently going to be on Facebook Live and on television tonight. It was a surprise to me as well when the email came out, but be aware that it is a public meeting, and so the public may be participating by watching our deliberations and discussions tonight. I think we have, everybody is here except for Mary. Melissa-
And I'm admitting her now.
Okay. Melissa had mentioned she's not going to be able to join us tonight, and so once Mary is here, we're fully staffed. So I would entertain a motion to, actually, I don't need a motion to open the meeting. I can just declare it open, right? So we will declare the meeting beginning. We have called to order. So typically what we do is approve the minutes from our last meeting. That was the meeting that we held on April 21 on Microsoft Teams. I know a number of people weren't able to access that platform. But those who were part of that meeting, if you could take a look at the minutes, and I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I make a motion.
All right. Thank you, Niraj. We have a motion to approve. Would anybody like to second?
Second.
All right. I think I saw Megan's hand go up for that. So Rachel, too, you were both up, but I'm gonna declare as Megan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I heard a bunch of ayes. Anybody opposed? Same sign? That carries. We have approved our minutes. So I don't know if we've received official communication, so I'm just gonna jump straight to the town liaison with Linda and check in with you. Linda, you have anything to share with us about what's going on with the town, anything we should be aware of?
Well, we have a meeting tomorrow night. We're meeting also on Zoom, the town board. And we had our work session last week. This week it's alleged session, so we're back in the groove as far as that goes. Tomorrow night, we're accepting the two applications for hair salons. You know, we don't know when they'll be able to open, but we're going through that. And the community choice aggregation legislation, if you've heard about that, that's on the agenda for approval. And CCA, you see it around town. There's a lot of talk about it. It's another way for your bills to be paid with electricity instead of gas. You know, it's an alternative to R G N E. And as things progress, we have to hire somebody to investigate, you know, how it's all gonna be done. But anyway, we got the legislation to be passed to start the process. Some other towns have been doing it, and so are we. So, you know, that's happening. Otherwise, you know, Memorial Day is happening, but it's happening virtually. You can turn on TV on Memorial Day and see the ceremony, but we won't be there. It'll all be some information from the past Memorial Days. But if you want to buy rose and dedicate it to somebody, you can do that by contacting Sabrina Renner, srenner@penfield.org. And Rich Goff, who is gonna be our speaker live, is still gonna be our speaker. You know, Pat's husband, if you remember. So all that's happening. And, you know, a lot of stuff is just on hold, you know, as far as the summer festivities and so on like that. We're in a holding pattern until we know more, and the state lets us do more.
Anything that affects us at the library directly?
No. I mean, you know, what you're doing got a lot of conversation going on Facebook about curbside pickup and so on. I think a lot of people are anxious to see the library open in some respect, you know, and no, no, you know more than I do about what's happening at the library, because when the library opens, we'll all be open. I mean, it's, but you can't open until the town recreation opens, until the town hall opens. It's pause.
So you mentioned the Memorial Day. Did I see that the Fourth of July parade has been canceled? Or is that not official yet?
That's not official. That was round the quote, went on record.
Okay.
As far as I know, I don't think Tony's put anything out. It hasn't been on record yet. We're kind of in a holding pattern for all that.
Yeah, just far enough down the road that we don't make the decision before we have to, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Linda? Right. I'm seeing people shake their heads, but so I'm gonna take that as a no. So we will move on. I know most of the committees have not met in the last couple of months since things closed down, but there are some things that we need to cover. So first is from finance and budget. I know we have to approve the reports, and then we also have to make a decision about one of our CDs that is coming due. And then I'm not sure if there was, I read your email. I actually reread it today, and I still am forgetting if there was any other decisions beyond those. But if you could lead us through the finances.
Okay. The financial report, which was included in the material that Gail sent out, shows that the library is doing extremely well because it has been on pause. So even though we are almost halfway through the year, we have spent about a quarter to a third of the budget. In most cases, there are some instances of things like dues where the spending is at a normal level because those things cycle through on a regular basis. But I did talk to Buddy about this, and she says that once people are back, the orders will pick up and the expenses will kind of resume. So we will have, overall, we will have a normal year, but right now it looks like it is a little slow. And you have the reports from Family First and from Key Bank. And yes, we do have to, we have one CD that is going to mature June the 5th, I believe. And I need to find a rate that is as good, if not better than that. I'm not sure how well we'll do, but I'm going to call three or four places, including Family First, and see if we could get any kind of break of the interest.
Okay. So you're gonna interrupt-
But I do need, I do need a vote to do that.
That's what I was gonna call. And since Barbara can't nominate herself, I would entertain someone else making a motion to authorize Barbara to reinvest that CD. And this will say, usually we try not to say best rate available, whatever, however you want to phrase it, but if somebody would be willing to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Thank you, Niraj. Would somebody second that?
I'll second. And Barbara, I also just wanted to say that the last time I had one come, I had one mature at Family First for the library. I called around, and Family First actually matched one of the other rates that I had found that was slightly higher than yours, than theirs was at that time. So that's an option, too, if you wait to call Family First last. Because it's already there. They might match the rate that you want.
They have more flexibility than some of the other-
At another institution.
I appreciate that.
All right. So Amy was cutting in and out a little bit. Barbara, did you catch all of that, that she was-
I did. I understood what she was saying, and I, thank you, Amy. That's really good information.
Yeah. So thank you as well, Amy. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Same sign. It may be easier, since like, most people are doing the conscientious thing and muting when they're not talking. I might call for a show of hands, because then I can just see when all your hands get raised. That might actually work easier than voice votes. So that motion did carry. So Barbara, you are authorized to reinvest the CD. And if you would resume walking us through the financial reports.
Okay. There is not much else to say. The, pretty much the balances are what they are. And we are, as I said, we're in, we have the gift of memorial fund. At the end of the month, we had $164,290.83, and that is both at Family First and at Key Bank. And then our operating revenue at the end of the month was $1,314,029.35.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone on the financial reports? Any comments from Bunny on the, in addition?
No. Barbara very faithfully reported all the information from the budget.
Okay. Then if there's nothing further, I will ask for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented. Somebody to move?
I'll take a motion.
All right. Thank you, Niraj.
But I'll make a motion to accept the financial reports.
That's presented. All right. Niraj had already moved, but I'll take that as a second, if that's all right with you. And so all in favor signify by a show of hands. All right. Lots of hands raised. Anybody opposed? Same sign. That passes. I'm not sure if Linda's looking up at her camera or rolling her eyes at me, but I'm- All right. Thank you, everyone.
I had somebody come in the room.
Oh, that's all right. I'm just teasing. If we're doing something like this, we should at least have fun with it, right? So personnel, I know they haven't met. Amy, we've had a little bit of trouble hearing you. Is there anything from personnel for us for tonight?
No, there isn't. I think we have three Zoom meetings going on at my house right now, so I think that's part of the problem.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Yeah, I didn't think there was anything, but I wanted to check. I will. So Amy and I had traded some emails, and so Personnel Committee, be aware that Amy will probably send out an email to the rest of you to try to put together a meeting with your committee sometime this month. So just be on the lookout for that. Correct? Amy? All right.
Yep.
Yep. And then strategic planning. My understanding is you also have not met. Rachel, any updates? Anything we should be aware of?
No. I think basically what we were working on with everything being shut down, there isn't really a lot to do.
That, that's the answer I kind of figured would come, but I wanted to make sure. So. And then Mary, again, bylaws and policy, so far as I know, hasn't met. But anything that we should be aware of in terms of-
We, we do have a policy that is kind of in limbo, unattended child. So I'll have Gail attach it next month, then we can vote on it next month.
Okay.
But it was, we were supposed to vote on it in March.
All right.
So it kind of fell through the COVID cracks.
Yeah, we didn't meet in March, and so it's understandable that we didn't vote on it. But yeah, okay, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and approve it at an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Clearly, it's not an urgent one, since we don't have children in the library attended or otherwise.
And that's all I have.
Okay. One thing, just to let people know, so both Bunny and I, when we, in advance of the April meeting, Bunny and I had looked up some of the stuff about open policy meetings, right? Since technically before COVID, we weren't allowed to do this. But they had relaxed some of the rules about open meeting. Just off to be an open meeting, that's why it's on Facebook tonight. But they changed some of the rules to allow us to do these remotely, which was different. So it's just, it wants, want to note that we didn't just do it, both Bunny and I looked up separately and checked with each other to find out that we had come to the same conclusion that we could do this. All right. And then communications, again, probably, as far as I know, you guys haven't met, but Niraj, anything that we should know that's going on with your committee?
No, we slipped, slipped through the COVID cracks, too.
Yeah. I expected that not a single committee has met for the past three months, which I think is actually right and appropriate. One thing that I'd like to bring to your attention, though, as a communications committee, I'd asked Linda about, you know, anything that's affected the parade. We still have the advertisements up for the book sale in September. And I guess I don't want to wait until September to be talking to the friends about what's, what's gonna happen with that, whether or not that could still happen. So sometime, you know, the next month or two, if your committee could be in touch with the friends, just see where they're at, what they're talking about, keep us in the loop. And again, I think it's far enough down the road, we don't have to make a decision about it, but I don't want a decision made at the last minute.
So like ask the friends where they are with the book sale?
Yeah, ask where they are. Ask if they've been talking about contingencies for COVID. If it would still happen, how many, how they would restrict people coming in, if it, if it just has to be suspended for a year. I mean, it's gonna be the, well, I'm trying to, trying to phrase this correctly. I think it's primarily their decision, but we're above them and can, if we think, if we don't like the plan, we can have a say in that, too. But I prefer to have-
So get an idea what the plan is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And again, I, you know, it's May and that's September, so we don't need the decision today, but things can easily fall through over the summer, and I would like to, I feel better if I knew they were already thinking about it and trying to figure it out.
Cool.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Thank you. All right. And then Foundation, I'm pretty sure has also not met and definitely has not been doing fundraising over the past three months, but-
Actually, we have been meeting through Zoom.
All right.
It's not a good time for fundraising, so we're working on a donation envelope and a bookmark.
Thanks.
But we're not really asking people for money right now.
Yeah.
But that will be in the future.
Eventually, we hope to be able to fundraise again. Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
So that's all I have for that.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah. And just again, to reassure everybody, I was expecting, I kind of knew most committees had not met for three months, but I kind of want to run through just to see where we are. So I'm gonna go ahead and move to the directors. And Bunny, rather having you do, I guess I'd like to start by asking you, I think most of us saw the emails about opening up for curbside pickup this week. I know I saw some feedback from within the board of people who are excited to see that happen. Could you just walk us through the decision? You know, were you in contact with other directors, with the county? And I read the whole email that had all the safeguards, but maybe other people haven't. So could you kind of walk us through the steps of how you're gonna keep staff and customers, or patrons safe, and of how the decision was made about we're ready to do that?
Um, the Central Library had decided to reinstitute curbside pickup this week. And taking a lead from them, I saw that the plan that they submitted to Dr. Mendoza was very similar to the way we ran it when we did it before we closed. It would be the, we would run at the same, if we did it again. That was approved by Dr. Mendoza, and I thought they considered that to be safe. I am also constantly monitoring CDC guidelines, OSHA guidelines, World Health Organization guidelines, to make sure that we're operating within those. We are operating within all those parameters. So I felt, and I was getting quite a few inquiries from the town. Gee, when could we have access to library materials again? This seemed like a pretty safe way to reconnect with our patrons. So we are observing staff staggering and, of course, things like social distancing and constant masking while we're here at work, just to make sure we're keeping ourselves safe while we're planning on doing this. So that, all those things, I factored into the decision to resume that this week.
Did you talk to other neighboring directors just to see where they were?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The Monroe County Library System did a survey of directors to see what activities they were planning to undertake under this pandemic. And curbside pickup was the number one priority of what directors wanted to do. They either had a solid plan to begin it, or they were formulating a plan to begin it a couple of weeks out from now. So that was definitely a trend that the directors wanted to do. Webster is starting it this week. They're also starting tomorrow. Henrietta started yesterday, so we'll gradually see, I think, over the next couple of weeks. I know Pittsburgh's planning to start it June 1st. It has the support of its town supervisor. So, and Tony has approved our plan as well. He looked it over and gave me the approval to go ahead. So I think as we watch our neighbors over the next couple of weeks, we'll see more and more rollouts of this service.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Bunny on this particular topic? Yeah, Rachel?
I was just curious, is by phone the only way that you're accepting requests?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Just checking. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Question, Bunny, but I'm worried that I'm gonna be breaking up. So if I am, just wave me away and I'll stop talking. I noticed that other libraries are doing like virtual programming, story hours. The librarians are recording themselves doing stories and like virtual cooking classes or things like that. Is there, I know that we're, we kind of feel like we're probably coming out of this sooner rather than later, but has there been any discussion about adding things like that to social media?
We have been doing that, the story hours. And I have a picture that Jennifer received from her baby Storytime and her, the next one up, which I can't remember what that is for the one-year-olds, Wee Walkers. She received a couple of pictures, but I'm not sure how to share a screen using this. I thought there'd be a little button so I could do it, and I'm not seeing. Oh, wait a second. Here is share screen, and I'll see if I can, can call this one up and show you all. Is everybody seeing it?
No.
Oh, okay. I guess I'm not doing it right.
Okay. So some of that is happening, is what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah, we are. We are doing it. And of course, now that we're back and we're able to talk to each other, we're talking about more, more things. And I don't know if I can bring you guys back. I can't bring this back up. There. Yeah, we're planning on doing some more of that. We, just to give Dave Renner a plug, I've been working with him while everybody else has been off, working at home. I've been working with David on using some of the town resources, like broadcasting some of our programming and doing some streaming using PCTV. And so we've got some more technology that we can throw into the mix when we, we get back and we have to continue to do some of our programming remotely.
Thank you. Just let everyone know, I went ahead and had looked at some of the things, too. I know it was that, I think, I'm not sure if it was Nyla or a different one. They had had their meeting last week, May 13, and like the number one agenda item for that was also curbside pickup and reopening. And I did check the guidelines, you know, because they're the different phases. And so for libraries, there's kind of this thing of, do we count as, you know, so specialty retail is allowed to reopen, right? So you're seeing bookstores and that kind of thing are reopening, but only for curbside pickup. So we're sort of that, we're not a store, so we, but so, but if, but we kind of fall into that similar thing in terms of being, providing a service. And so there was, able to do curbside pickup, not to have patrons in the building. Staff has to be 50% or less than what would normally be. So what Bunny talked about of staggering staff, you don't have any. And then staff, when they're there in public areas, within six feet of each other masked. So from what I could tell, we are in compliance with the Phase 1 opening guidelines for New York State. Libraries weren't specified, but I think that, I think that was more looking at, all right, we're now, we get to keep going past the 40 minutes.
Yay.
Hey, thank you to whoever did that. So libraries were only mentioned, but that was in terms of being public gatherings and allowing people into the building. They didn't deal with this other aspect of curbside. So, so far as I can tell, we're in compliance, but again, I'm not the expert on that, so I just wanted-
It's been very unclear. I've been trying to navigate it as best I can using the advice of the people who are a little more knowledgeable than I am about these things. And I felt pretty confident that we were, one way or another, in compliance. We, at least when we had the approval of Dr. Mendoza. And we were, we were advised that the person that had the ultimate authority over us in our local, our locality was our town supervisor. And if Tony felt confident about it, then I felt it was all right for us to proceed.
I was pleased to see that it's gonna be done a little bit differently than it was done back in March in terms of setting the materials down and then re-closing the door. So that the, you know, rather than handing it to somebody, which obviously has less than six feet. So I like, I think it's gonna be a little bit smoother and a little bit safer than when we, when we attempted it the first time around.
I hope so. We actually didn't touch people in March either. We set things down for people to pick up and backed off. But yeah, we're regulating the amount of, of time for people, scheduled times, that people can come and pick things up and the amount of materials. So that should control the traffic a little bit better. And, and we're observing, as you said, being very stringent about observing the new guidelines for social distancing. So we should be able to operate that with no problem.
So I know we received the guidelines in email. Are those up on the library's website as well for the community to see?
They're, they're, the guidelines, are you talking about the actual procedure for-
Yeah, the procedure, procedure, not guidelines. Yes.
Yeah. Actually, I would rather not put that up. I don't know that everybody needs to be privy to every, every detail of our procedure.
Okay.
Is there something within that, though, that you would like us to, us to put up?
No, I see it with the, so you don't, you're not doing the step-by-step, but you're giving people the, the hours and those kinds of things. So.
Yes. I really don't, don't want necessarily people to know all ins and outs of our interacting with our integrated library system and that kind of thing that we're using to do that.
Yeah, it was more the procedure of like, okay, show up, how to get out of your car, how to pick up your stuff. But even that, I guess, you know, you don't want somebody hanging around nearby, jumping into a, if somebody leaves their car running. So, but that, it was that more of that question of like the procedure of letting people know this is, you know, so you get a scheduled time and you pull up and you get your bag, that kind of thing.
We have put that on the website. I can take a look at that and see if it's detailed enough. But what we customarily, what we did in March and what we're planning to do again is, as we deal with individuals, is now, what do I do again, and be prepared to share with them? Yes, scheduling you for a time, you need to show up there, get in line, stay in your car, wait till it's, your, your turn is first, then come up, identify yourself, back away. We'll leave the materials there. When the door's shut, you approach and take the things.
Yeah.
Yeah. I actually, I just, I was gonna say, I just on my other monitor pulled up the library website and reading through the instructions really quickly. I mean, I, it was clear to me, reading through it, how that goes. So I think a community member wanting to understand the, the process, I think, would have no problem with what's on the library website.
All right. Thank you, Megan.
I agree. And I think that maybe if that isn't already posted on any social media, just link back to the website for full instructions, because that did give the step-by-step.
And I believe Miriam did send that out on our social media accounts and sent constant contact to, to people announcing it was happening. I know, not sure how much detail that had about the exact procedure, but-
So the email through constant contact did have all of that. So.
Okay, good.
Good. And so glad to hear that it is on the website already as well. Good. And so glad to hear that it is on the website already as well, so excellent. Okay, any other questions for Bunny on that? Otherwise, I'm going to kind of give Bunny the opportunity to do her, I wanted to start with that because I knew that's the foremost on all of our minds. But Bunny, anything else in your Director's Report that you want to draw to our attention that you want us to know about?
I actually have a few things, and curbside pickup is my number one, so that's out of the way. The next thing I just wanted to let you know is that I am working on a plan for further steps in the reopening, further phases. I'm just beginning of that, but I have a lot of it already kind of formulated in my mind, and I have been watching some of the plans of other members of MCLS. I have lots of ideas about how we can roll out fairly smoothly. But I'm, I want to take a very cautious, restrained approach to doing this because I want to be sure at every step, we are absolutely safe, we and our patrons are safe. I will be presenting at the next Board Meeting an amendment to the Code of Conduct. One of the things that I would like to institute here, once we do open the doors a little bit, a crack to the public, is I really would like to enforce things like requiring a mask to enter the facility. I've been watching what other organizations have done, other retail establishments have done. And I've gotten a lot of ideas about how we can follow along in that, that same vein. In order to enforce the requirement of masks, we will need to have, to put a little backbone to our Code of Conduct. So I will be drafting a temporary amendment to that to include the fact that we can refuse access if anybody approaching libraries refusing to comply with the safety guidelines that we have established and posted. So that will require, in order to have a little muscle in that, that will require an amendment to our Code of Conduct. So I'm going to be working on that.
Okay, will you be able to send that out to us at least a week before the next meeting?
I hope so, yes. It shouldn't take me too long to do it.
I think it'd be nice to have that in writing first before we have to look at it or vote on it.
Definitely, definitely. And then the next thing is I have received the call for the 2021 budget. I haven't even been able to crack the worksheet yet. I've been so busy preparing the plans and training staff on the curbside pickup. Once it gets underway and we have a couple of days under our belt of practice with that and working out the kinks, then I should be freed up a little bit. I can begin to work on the 2021 budget. And the last thing is a big surprise announcement that I hope is a little premature. It'll take us a little bit to get it underway. We were able to reach an agreement today with Infobase to offer the patrons of Penfield, residents of Penfield, access to video on demand. So we are going, we are going to have, it's a very nice library of content that they have. It's very, going to be very easy use. What we have to get in place now with Infobase as well as Monroe County Library System Library Automation Services. We, I don't want to buy this for the whole county, so we want to have it and we want to have it available to residents of Penfield. So we're going to be working with them to use either some kind of authentication, a passwording system, or they're interacting with the patron database in the Monroe County Library System to be sure when people log in, they are really residents, they are cardholders in the town of Penfield. So I have to work on that kind of filter that we can have to offer that. But I think people will be very excited about that database. I have been looking and looking, and so has Todd Randall for a long time, for a model and content that I like. I haven't found a model until this one, and the content is wonderful. It's BBC content, ABC, ESPN, PBS. It's got a lot of things that go along with the kind of circulation we've had among our DVDs for our particular service area. So I think the content is going to be able to mesh very well with our service area. And we also got a separate module for that, and they were nice enough to throw that in for free. I think we were taking advantage a little bit of a crisis here because they gave us a little longer subscription period. We have a 14-month year instead of a 12-month year. We got a nice discount on it, and they threw in the children's module of those videos for free. So I think we're going to have a nice assortment of content to offer the residents of Penfield for streaming video.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Bunny, any comments? Alright. Then, so far as I know, we don't have action items, decisions, or deadlines, but I may be forgetting something. So if I'm forgetting something, please speak up. And then unfinished business, shouldn't have any new business. Executives talked about this very briefly, but the last Trustee Newsletter talked about states' new minimum standards for libraries that we have to make sure we meet by the first of next year. So we won't talk about that tonight, but that'll be on a future agenda, possibly June. So just be aware, that's new business coming up. If you, like me, recycled your newsletter already, you may want to go to the website and find that, take a look at that. We're a pretty good library. It's possible we already meet the compliance standards, but it's good to review that and be prepared to discuss that, so.
Absolutely, and we're in good shape. If we're not compliant, we're just short of compliance.
Okay, good. So then the Claims Payment Authorization, so Amy is the one who went in, and I guess I'll hand things over to you, Amy. Or was Amy having trouble connecting again?
She's muted.
I don't have the number in front of me. I totally forgot. Hold on.
Okay.
I have it.
You do?
Yes.
What is it? I'll write it down and then I'll say it in my.
Thirty thousand, six hundred, twenty-two and seventeen cents.
Okay. I make a motion to authorize payment in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Alright, thank you. Barbara's seconds. All in favor signify by raising your hand or thumbs up, however you want to. There we go. Anybody opposed? Same sign. Alright, that carries. So we have to appoint an auditor for next month. We kind of have abandoned our typical alphabetical order for a little bit. Barbara, Niraj, and Amy have all gone in on a, earlier on the Tuesday or the Monday, the day before, and done it either from their car or from a private room in the library. Is anybody willing to do that before our June meeting? I appreciate you volunteering, Niraj, but you've already done it, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to spread it around. So is anybody else able to do that? Otherwise, I will look to see whose turn it would be and assign.
I mean, I don't mind, I just have never done it before, so I don't know. Like, I would just need someone to explain to me what I'm doing. Because our one in-person meeting that got canceled, Melissa was going to show me, and then that ended up. So I think Denise and I are in the same boat that we've never.
Never done it. Yeah.
Megan, I would be happy to have a conversation with you.
Okay.
Denise, maybe we could do our own little Zoom meeting and go through that. It's, it's really not difficult to do.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd say I'm fine if we set that up then, Chris. You can go ahead and put, put me down. I'll go in and do that.
Sounds great. So Barbara will do a Zoom or conference call with Megan and Denise. Megan will volunteer to be the person for June. Alright, before we adjourn, see, I predicted 40 minutes. We're doing well. Anything else before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Alright, thank you very much, everybody. Who would like to move the adjournment? Alright, thank you, Niraj. Anybody to second?
I will, second.
Alright, I think Denise was in. Alright, all in favor signify by thumbs up, waving your hand, however you want to indicate that I can, there we go. That's a lot of hands. Anybody opposed to adjourn? Alright, I don't see any opposition there. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating this week and this way. And we'll keep in touch as well as we can. Alright, thanks a lot, everyone.
Bye, everybody.